He's always been wireless.
They were last time.
Yeah, we're down a couple. And there's one still in transit, we think. Yeah, roads are iffy. Good evening. It is six o'clock, so we're going to start the Planning Commission meeting for Monday, December 1st. Please call the roll.
Commissioner Holly.
Here.
Commissioner Schaefer. Commissioner Stoker. Commissioner Chorin.
Here.
Alderman Stralcek.
Here.
Mayor Nurban.
Here. First up, we have approval of the meeting minutes from October 27th.
Move approval.
Second.
Motion and a second. Are there any comments or corrections to those minutes? Hearing and seeing, all is in favor of the minutes, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Minutes are approved. Onto the consent agenda. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda? Would anyone like to remove an item?
Second.
Motion and a second. All is in favor of approving the consent agenda, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Consent agenda is approved. Onto regular business. First item, item 4A, Point Real Estate for Swan Ridge Farms. Applicant is seeking a final plat approval to allow for Phase 2 of the Swan Ridge Farms subdivision consisting of total of remaining 42 lots to the lands located immediately south and west of 10129 North Swan Road.
You basically said everything I was going to say. Other than that, everything is in in accordance with the plan. There are a couple punchable items that they need to address. You did get two letters, I think, on the dais regarding some concerns with some of the neighbors. But just a reminder, this is a final plat, so if it's consistent with the preliminary plat, we do have to approve it. We don't really have, there's no time to re-debate some of these items at this point. But if there's some concerns or questions we have, obviously, a lot of it is in your area related. Cole's here to answer any of those questions if you have them, so.
All right, we do have one person registered to speak on this item. Tim Spears. Doesn't say if he supports or opposes, it depends. Address says 9211 West Stanford Court. Please approach the podium, sir. Got five minutes.
My name is Tim Spears, 9211 Stanford Court. Stanford Court. I have a concern about the water drainage. I brought it up when they initially had the plat. I sent, I gave you a picture. Originally, a big part of this section, all the water flowed in to the center of the field and would drain out through farmer's tiles slowly. After they moved a land, they just created a retention pond, but retention pond only captures about half the water that is flowing from that area. The other half misses the pond completely. And as the bottom picture shows, the thing in June, the water just flowing around that pond with that and flowing across the yard between my house and my neighbor's house. And this picture was from June. That wasn't the biggest flood that we had. The later one was, I think, August. And we've had water go over top like this four times this year. And we haven't had it but once in probably five years, water flow over the top like that. So I have a concern that something needs to be further done to manage the draining water from here to prevent water flowing down through, head down through the neighborhood. And the other thing is, I'd like to see that outlot by the houses there. Right now, I'm just growing up with weeds. I'd like to see grass and maybe some trees put in it or something. Any questions?
Well, this, you just speak to us at this point, and then we'll, we'll go back into regular session and we'll, we'll talk about your concerns.
Okay, that's, that's all I had.
Right, thank you. Does anyone else wish to speak on this item while we're in public comment? Seeing none, let's go back to staff and, and Cole's here. Maybe we could talk about what we know. I'm not, this is the first I've heard of this, so maybe you're more familiar with the issue.
Sure. We, we actually met with a few homeowners on the Stanford Court, in the Stanford Court area. They had some concerns over the summer with how it was developing and how the drainage was coming off during the development. That was obviously before all the final grading had been completed in the subdivision. And since then, we've kind of had the, the sort of closeout, sort of inspections and things from the developer's engineer. And they have to do like a full, full survey of the whole site, including their storm ponds, to make sure that's all going in per design. And some of the photos that were provided in that email that you guys have, it is functioning the way it is supposed to. It's, we did have a lot of large rain events this summer that, you know, are probably going to run off into the adjacent properties as it does right now. But that would have happened as it would have before if there was a farm field there. So we've, we've looked into some of these issues that have been brought up. Happy to answer any questions, though.
So the photos from June are when the final grading wasn't complete yet?
Correct.
Okay, so it's hard to assess how it's functioning.
Right. And some of that offsite, a lot of what you're seeing in the photos, offsite drainage, that's actually coming from the two existing properties on Swan Road. That's not meant to be captured within the pond. That is meant to just drain around the pond and, and continue on as it did before.
Well, ask questions. Yeah, Alderman Stralcek.
Don't figure, I've got my hand up. That makes no sense at all. You put a pond in that can't take water in an area that water drained to historically. When we put in subdivisions and we have water concerns, we don't want any more water draining off of a property at a higher rate than it was pre-development. And what we're showing here in this picture clearly isn't working. So if this is anything close to what the end result's going to look like, that's not acceptable for me, and it's a no vote on everything I see before me based on one issue, and that's the water drainage. So that, you know, I have a hard line in the sand on how can we work to address this and give the residents peace so that they understand that this drainage issue is not something the city's going to create. And then, you know, circle back to after a couple court cases or something, 20 years down the road, when we finally get through the, the process, you know, let's address it early before we're done, done with everything that we want to do. Because, I mean, I would be livid if I was a neighbor, you know? You basically put a moat around the pond in which, you know, if that space is designed to take all that water, that space should take all that water. And it should continue into the future to do so.
Yeah, the, the pond is designed to capture all of the water from the development. That water that you can see in the photo is from the east. It's, it's not from the development, it's running through the development, but...
Doesn't matter. Doesn't matter.
It, it does.
The water has to flow in and out of the property in the same manner that it did pre-development.
Yep.
And if you're telling me anything different as my engineer...
No, I think, I think Cole's point is, the development is supposed to take care of the water that falls on its property into its pond.
Shoot.
But they don't have to capture other people's water. We don't, we don't impose that on anyone.
You are correct that it has to discharge less flow after, after the development, even considering this. And they do do that, and we have checked on that because we have gotten concerns from that area. So that is something we've checked into.
My issue is the flow. And what I'm seeing in the photograph in front of me, that's as clear as a, you know, 10,000-word essay, is that the water is not flowing smoothly through there. There's a barrier, and the barrier that was created was the perimeter of the pond. And I want to support this, but I need to get past this hurdle in order to do so, respectfully, right?
Commissioner Schaefer.
Sorry, Cole. So I don't think that this is in the packet, the handout that we have, but you are familiar with it. So trying to envision, making sure, I'm sorry if I'm just reiterating what you said, but I want to make sure that I understand. So the pond is kind of visible in this bottom photo. The water track that looks like it goes around the pond, that's, that will continue?
Correct.
And then I'm trying to envision where the homes will be in relation to that, because if I were building a new home, I feel like I would also be concerned with that as the, the optics of my drainage for my subdivision. So this is taken from, from someone's patio, it looks like, from the plant hooks. The new homes are across the pond from that?
New homes are across the pond from there, yes.
So they will also have this track? And this, and that, that solution is independent of the completion of grading. It will still look like there's a pond with a water, it looks like a track to me, like it just surrounds the pond. That will persist.
The...
The track, the waterway that surrounds the pond will persist?
It's, it's probably a little deceiving from the photo. None, none of that water that is on the close side of the pond in that photo is from the development itself. That's coming from across Swan Road, from the east, and these two existing properties on Swan Road. So that water right before the development went through and went through Stanford Court, through a ditch and some pipes. That is still occurring as it did before. But the, the development itself is capturing all of their, all of their stormwater runoff within the, within the pond in the photo. It's just kind of deceiving in that because you can't see the pond level with the vegetation in it, and you can't see where the water is coming from.
And I understand what you said. And we, this, so it's addressing what will be, allegedly addressing what will be created with the new development, but is it also not an opportunity to, to improve upon what exists, even if it's coming from these existing two homes?
I mean, it's, it's not required to take in offsite stormwater. That's, that's not something we'd put on any developer unless that was, that's outside of our ordinance.
You have to take care of the stormwater runoff you create on your site, but if there's stuff coming from other sites flowing through, you have to provide conveyance, but that doesn't go into your pond.
I do not want to buy a new home where this is the way that the water is working.
Can I?
I think, well, we're getting a lot thrown at us that no one's familiar with this issue, and I'm, I'm still not sure I understand the map in its totality. Maybe the applicant would like to explain his side of it.
Sure, great.
Find some extra color.
Thank you. My name is Tony Zanna from Pinnacle Engineering Group, the engineer here on behalf of the developer. So yeah, that, that pocket that you see on that area, I didn't see the pictures that you're referring to, but essentially that you can see where the pond is, is located in kind of the center of that aerial screen. So what is happening is the drainage from the west comes in elevation-wise, we did not have enough vertical elevation to bring all of that water into the pond. It just wouldn't work elevation-wise on the west, elevation-wise on the east, at the rear of the two neighbors. We just couldn't physically bring the water into the pond, have the waters, the, the, the top of the pond built up high enough without it backing up onto the neighbors to the east and the neighbors on the west. So I don't want to get too much detail, but if you get into the, into the civil plans or, I think, Jack, you had the plat up at one point. So if you, could you please zoom in kind of middle of the page to the right? Yeah, can you go to the right? So 70, lot 70 and 71, you'll see a private drainage unit. We did take a stormpipe and bring it between 75, 76, 71, and 70. So in the back of that lot, there's a catch basin with a beehive grate to catch as much water as we could physically get into our pond, which vertical elevation would allow us to do. What we couldn't catch is that upper triangle. So that runs towards the top of the screen behind 71, 72. The water that comes from the west runs towards our property, runs behind 71, 72, behind 73, behind 74, and then goes between the two lots out to the north. Peak water, we, we met all the requirements of the city of Mequon, MMSD. I would say MMSD is one of the most stringent stormwater requirements in southeast Wisconsin. We've met all those requirements. We are allowed to discharge some water through our site without going through the pond, as long as we meet all of the requirements. So in other words, I can compensate or overcompensate in the pond to allow water that I can't physically catch because of the vertical elevation. So that's what we did. As far as what happens during construction, when there's no grass, if it's not graded properly, you're going to get more runoff. So that's what you see in an egg field. You'll have a lot more runoff when there's no grass. Once the grass becomes established, it's going to slow down the run, runoff, it's going to infiltrate better. Now, Mequon is notorious for clay soils, so you're not going to get a lot of infiltration. That's all accounted for in the calculations that we provided. So I would just say, yes, it, it looks, and we did have very large storm. It's no excuse. I think you would see that everywhere in the community, your community, neighboring communities. It was a very wet summer, so we had some bad experiences with construction sites based on what we were seeing. Now that it's graded and with the vegetation, you know, Cole could certainly go back and look through all the calculations we've met, and he has. We've met all the requirements of the city and MMSD on this. But to answer your question of why, I think the question was, why didn't all of that water get to the pond? Vertically, I just couldn't do it. I don't know if that helps. And when I say vertically, the elevation, you know, real simple, on the 70, 71 is here. The pond is a little bit higher, so there's a portion that I just couldn't drain uphill, if you will.
Go ahead, next question here.
So I guess my question for you, and what I struggle with as an alderman, right? And one of our biggest concerns with subdivisions going in is the drainage, right? In a, in a subdivision in my district, actually right behind my home, the developer agreed to dig a pond that was 20% oversized to try to help with some of the extra runoff. And although it hasn't been perfect, and it wasn't a perfect season, you know, I'll give you acknowledgement there, that has made a difference, right? The struggle that I have is with the staff reports and the staff reports that come forward before us. And what we assure our residents with is that the water runoff that would naturally come off of their property onto this property is in that calculation. And that doesn't change in the sense that they will have less ability for water to runoff or water to dam up. You're acknowledging that you built up the sides of the, the pond versus maybe digging the pond deeper. I'm questioning the, the quality of that decision, or if there is a pivot that we can have here that can address some of the neighbors' concerns that they've given us photos on from an engineering standpoint. So the water that comes onto the property from that space, my understanding is any new development, can't change that as well as part of the MMSD requirement.
Correct, correct.
Can you talk about that particular piece?
For sure.
And expand in that space, what you did to accommodate? And if there's anything that we could recommend that would be reasonable, that would address the issue, it might cost a little money, it might not be perfect for the developer, but right now, I'm seeing a no vote photo in front of me, and I'm trying to come up with some level of acknowledgement where we have some process in place in which we can quantifiably state our request to have this mitigated.
Okay. Yeah, the, the pond was dug as deep as it could be. There's going to be a point that you can go as deep as you want to go. It's what is the discharge point out of it. So we're set based on what the vertical elevation is on the common property line to the north. So that elevation, even if I went 20 feet deeper in the pond, essentially, once it fills up with the clay soils in Mequon, that water level is going to be stable at whatever that elevation is that we can discharge to. So when you say we were too high on the pond, we weren't too high on the pond. The pond was as, the discharge pipe was as low as it could go, and we gave as much volume as we could to compensate. As far as the water to the west, we did not ignore it. It was in the model. And, and we do meet all discharge requirements with the water, offsite water from the west, offsite water from the east, and our development water. All of it is in the calculations. We meet all the required calculations.
What I'm seeing is that I can take a canoe to the outside of your pond, walk the perimeter of the pond with moderately muddy feet, but still yet dry, walkable. I'm not walking in soup. And then, you know, to leave, I need to get back in that canoe to get across that moated area, you know, that's on the other side. So, you know...
Is that, is that, or is that not how it's designed to function?
It is a swale to move water around the back of the, so it would be, you know, much like a roadside ditch, if you think the same thought process with a roadside ditch, it would be the same, the same idea, essentially. We have to get that water.
I think the problem is that's water coming from offsite. It's not their water. It's coming from offsite, so they're not required to put it in the pond.
Even above and beyond that, if we could have physically got it into the pond, we would have done that. We just can't, we, that's why we did the, the stormpipe, is we had shown when Jack turned on the final plat, we put a storm sewer pipe from the pond between lot 75, 76, 71, and 70. We did take a pond over there and put a catch basin in there so we could catch as much offsite water as we possibly could based on what the existing conditions allowed us to, to do that.
And when was the final grading done, Cole? Or when was it done and we signed off on it?
I think it was...
We just did the ASBILs, like at the end of October and the beginning of November.
So it wasn't done, done until, this is June, and it wasn't done until October?
It was not done then, correct.
So I think we're also looking at a, a picture of when it's in interim state of construction.
Yeah, and there's like, there's silt fence straight downstream of there, too, that kind of collects sediment and stuff and holds back water before it goes into Huntington Park, at least in that photo, too. And that's, you know, that's obviously not there anymore now that it's stabilized and everything, but that, this is a very, that photo is a very interim sort of condition during construction.
So how do I, as an alderman, make a decision based on a hunch that I, I want to agree with you, right? But I need to protect my residents. So how do I quantify my decision? And, you know, what, how do I get assurance? What changed between this photo and, and the October grading to allow for a better situation?
We, we have a lot of closeout diligence on our end and with, with the engineer and, and developer with regards to stormwater, because these situations come up often, and that's always a sensitive topic. We require a full survey of the pond. We require the engineer to go through, inspect the site, and write a memo to the city staff that's saying that the, that the site does conform with the original stormwater requirements. We have a third-party review of the stormwater management plan, and that also gets approved by MMSD staff as well as DNR staff. So it's very thoroughly evaluated, and it's, there's a lot more work done than, than one, you know, one photo would show in, that we were provided today.
Yeah, just, my worry is that when there are mistakes, it's, it's multiple years, if not decades, before they're fixed. And the residents that had a nice field next to them to start with now have a problem they have to deal with.
This is a little, this is a little outside of the scope of this item, too, but there is some downstream issues within Huntington Park that we're working with the HOA on that are definitely contributing to some of these issues as well. That is not the developer's fault. That is long-term outlot maintenance, as we see in some of our subdivisions. So we're working through that, too, independently.
Or the, the ditches get grown full of things that, that need water flow. Yeah, but that's not this development. That's some, that's the other development that, adjacent to it. Commissioner Chorin.
I think I need to be educated here a little bit, Cole. If the, if the rules are to, to control water that's on your site, right? But there's water coming from another site, which means that that site hasn't controlled water on their site?
Well, no, I think it's controlled. It's just, it's, the water's got to go downhill.
Well, I would say, I would say stormwater became a requirement in the mid-'90s, I think, prior to 1990.
We're probably talking about a farm field here, right?
Yeah.
Okay.
So prior to 1990, if there's Huntington Park, a lot of these developments didn't have ponds. 1990 was detention ponds. We were all, we were worried about detaining water for a period of time. Then in the 2000s, it became, hey, we want to also look at water quality, which then those ponds became wet ponds. You'll see a lot of wet ponds. And that's really addressing salt, sediment, and things that run off the first flushes, they say, off the pavement. And then about 10 years after that, they decided, hey, we should also infiltrate the water and get infiltration back into the ground. You don't see that much in Mequon. Your soils won't allow infiltration. So I would tell you, if you see a subdivision pre-1990, there's no stormwater. It's just a stormpipe that discharges out.
Now, with, I understand your comment about the elevation of the discharge pipe and digging a, a pond deeper wouldn't do any good, other than hold more water and it becomes a lake and not a pond, right?
Once it fills up, it would benefit you until such time it fills up, because again, we clay line the pond, so you don't get infiltration. You wouldn't get infiltration against, in Mequon. So when we first build that cup and it's empty, the first rainfall, oh yeah, that's great. It's a great pond. It's helping us. But once it fills up to the, to the outlet pipe, whatever pipe discharges out of the pond, once it reaches that level below that, you're only going to get evaporation, and that happens so slowly that you wouldn't see a benefit to that. So that's what I mean by, I could dig it much deeper, but the only benefit you see is the very beginning until that cup fills up.
It would hold more water, more, more of the runoff. That's the concern, right?
Correct. So above, above, because you've made a, I mean, physically deeper vertically isn't going to make any difference. If you went wider, you would get more volume above the outlet structure. But we already overcompensated that pond, too. It was all part of the calculations that are in the, in the stormwater report.
Jack, there was an email that you shared here from another individual. Is this, are these items being addressed?
Again, I'm not sure what you mean by "address," but again, I just want to remind everybody that this is a final plat. So basically, this, the procedure here is that we're basically stating, the civil, city engineer is basically going on record saying that all the terms of development agreement, all the plans that were approved have been implemented in accordance with those plans. So there's, it's kind of late in the game to go back and try to change things at this point. So I just want to make sure we're clear on that. In terms of the email, I just, I just got this same time you did, basically, so I haven't really read everything. The only thing I did see is there was a question about a buffer, which, I mean, here's the photo from 2024. And there, you, this is the buffer that we were referring to in our report. There is, there's trees there. I don't know if it's trees that they didn't think were a buffer, but there are trees there. So I'm not sure what the, what the question is with regard to the buffer. But the landscaping plan that was approved by the Planning Commission has been implemented, installed in accordance with that plan. So there's going to be no additional landscaping out there. I think there was maybe two or three trees that were not planted in, but those will be going in or have gone in since the last time we talked, or will go in in spring. But everything that was, I mean, they, they applied for this final plat in June. We pushed them off the agenda until this month because they were not in compliance with all the terms. So when we get these applications in, there's a process we go through to determine whether they're in compliance or not. And we, we held them off the agenda for four months, basically, until they, they showed us they were in compliance.
Still want to go, Commissioner Schaefer?
Yeah, I was going to do the same, I was going to ask the same questions as Marty. Maybe the applicant or engineer representing the applicant, would you consider this tree line a, a buffer? I am not, I am admittedly not familiar with that particular vegetation, but it sounds like there were... but it sounds like there were concerns that maybe some of it had been removed by the city. Maybe buckthorn ash, I don't know. But if this is from 2024.
Certainly, I mean, buffers are all, I mean, but essentially. Yeah, for sure. A buffer can either be, certainly can be just grass. It's just some space between the lots and the property line. In this case, there, there is a long finger of outlet there. That's that vertical north-south outlet that's not part of lots. You can see, you know, there's trees and, you know, the buckthorn dead diseased trees, those should be removed. I think your arborist would say yes, that people should maintain those areas and get rid of those things so that they don't overcome the buffer area. But buffers could simply be grass or it could be a combination of trees. I think some of the swing sets and things kind of protrude into that area more on the other side. So it's not going to affect this development. But the buffer is essentially just a space between the lots and the subdivision line. So I, yeah, I would say that would be considered a buffer.
I don't really remember the context of that statement, but the, the, we don't require a buffer between like uses. These are both single family developments. We don't require, there's nothing in our code that would require additional buffer between two single family developments.
An outlet is sort of de facto.
Yes, yes. And that's, I think that was the point of the statement was that there isn't a buffer in our area between the two. So that's where the concern maybe was about spacing of homes and things like that. But with the plat now, you have basically, you, it's hard to see from here, but you have basically a buffer on both sides. So you'll have, you're not going to have homes abutting one another. There'll be someone close in this area here, maybe a little bit more. But this area, there's a pretty lengthy gap between the houses. But again, these plans were already better, have been approved already. We can't really address it.
And in spite of that, I'm still going to ask a question about the house pad and the elevation because I didn't, I don't think we have a page that shows the relative elevation in this subdivision versus Huntington Park. But is it significantly higher?
Cole, I'd have to answer that. I'm not sure 100%.
Off the top of my head, I don't, I don't think it's significantly higher. It seemed like that concern was more relating to the drainage and whether it was going to be running off directly toward their property, which as we talked about is going to go to the pond.
All right. We have the applicant and all the plans and all the grading has met all the MMSD requirements.
Correct.
And all our stormwater management requirements. I'm not, I'm not sure if there's a basis for us to deny anything. They've met what we've asked them to do. How long do we monitor these things after construction?
We, we do require another inspection two years after construction and then every five years thereafter for every storm pond installed in the city. But we'll continue to monitor it. And like I said, we're, we're working through some downstream issues as well. And this is kind of all tied together. So we'll be continuing to look at it throughout the process.
So this drains into another area that has its own issues?
Yes.
Cause it to back up more?
Yep, exactly.
Wonderful. Okay, Alderman Stolcheck.
So the two years after and then the five years after that, you're just talking about the storm pond itself?
Correct.
Okay. The concern that the residents are bringing forward, which doesn't get inspected, is what's outside of the rim of the pond and the water drainage that leaves their property and that that's being impeded. How can we inspect that at a time in which, you know, this, if this was completed in October, right? We don't have a significant rainfall or anything to address and really understand where that drainage is. And in a manner in which we can have some tooth to the inspection and then also require a correction if deemed necessary. If, you know, the calculations are, are almost always right, right? But we do find things on occasion and I, and I see something that gives me reason to believe there could be a chance of that moving forward more so than usual. So an extra inspection is kind of what I'm asking about. What can we put in a motion to? What type of inspection can we put into a motion to protect the people around it?
I mean, we could, yeah, we've had, we've had city staff do walkthroughs already through, through this whole area after we had already spoken with some of the Huntington Park residents. I mean, I, I don't know, we, we've already received most of the engineering memos and, and reviews from the developer. But I don't know if maybe the developer's engineer could offer up just a extra look and a, and some sort of evaluation or, or letter to us saying that that area's functioning as, as designed. And if we notice anything in the last closeout review things, we can, we can contact them as well.
Loose enough to get a no vote from me right now? Is there anything we can do to tighten that statement up a little bit?
At, at this point, I mean, we have everything that we already required with the DA.
But understand my position as I'm sitting here today. I've got the mayor that, you know, says that, you know, if we've met all the conditions, he really doesn't understand if there's a reason to not approve it. I see a problem in front of me. Nobody's qualified the difference in between what happened around that storm pond from this photo in October. There's no quantifiable thing. There's work done great. And there was a hunch and a promise from somebody looking to sell lots. And once that's done, I've seen these things be really hard to circle back to and get any type of tooth. So I'm looking for just a reason and/or another inspection that has some tooth and some merit to it that could require the person to take a little extra time to double check their engineering and make sure their numbers are exactly right. Because there, there would be risk that this could come back at them in a year after an inspection or so, just to make sure that this is buttoned down and, and what the residents have brought forward with photos. Very reasonable request, right? With photos. You know what I mean? And I don't know who I'm influencing up here and I, you know, that's not my intent. It's just, I have to get around my vote. And I just, I want to say, hey, well, add an inspection for this. If the course is, you know, the recourse is this in a motion, then I can vote yes for this tonight.
Commissioner Stoker.
And maybe a help to get you past this. And I mean no disrespect.
No, no, no. You know more than I do in this space.
What is the problem? Did this flood people's basements? There's standing water. We had massive rain events. You drove around Mequon, there was standing water everywhere. This is standing water in a non-finished site that's not completely graded. We've heard that there's downstream drainage issues completely unrelated to this. So I, you said that there's a problem. I don't know that there's a problem. There's standing water. If this was going into people's existing homes' basements, certainly there's a problem. To me, unless I'm missing something here, this is not a problem. It's designed this way. And, and again, I'm not an engineer. I'm a builder and I have to go through this process all the time. My faith has to be in the, in the engineering. So I, I guess I, I question you, what is the problem? Because you, you made that statement and I'm sitting here saying, yeah, there's standing water, but there was standing water all over Mequon.
Agreed. However, I guess my premise is what I see in the picture, right? Is the perimeter of the pond is elevated in that photo number three, right on the bottom. If they hadn't elevated the pond, the water drain off would have still ended up in the pond. That wa, that perimeter would not probably have been there. And the water would have been lower and drained maybe easier or better off of the neighboring property. So the property needs to accept the water in that was already draining before, right? Not, not fix all the problems that were there and we're in agreement on that, right? But accept the water that was already draining to it before and then discharge at a rate that's not higher or faster than it was, you know, pre-development.
I think they've met all those requirements.
Per engineering stats.
Well, yeah, but I, I don't know that we can, I mean, I'm, I was going to ask a similar question.
Yeah.
I don't know that we can assess it when it's not even done being constructed. So you, you saw a snapshot in time. It's not yet functioning like it's designed to because it's not yet done being built completely. I'm not sure I can, I'm not sure I can make a determination one way or the other based off of these photos.
The engineer has a photo in front of them. I, I, my question for city staff and the engineer as well, was to quantify what the difference is in between June and October and what was done differently around the pond. If nothing was done differently around the pond, then we know it's going to be the same moving forward. If we know what was done differently, they should be able to tell us what was done differently within reason.
Yeah, I, I, I see where you're going, but I'm, I'm still struggling.
Okay. You can, you know, ask for a motion and call the vote too, and I can just vote no.
Well, we, we may.
Well, I guess I could also offer up, this will go to common council next Tuesday. So if you're looking for information from the developer or staff at that, at this time, we could maybe get that to you prior to that council vote. Again, this is recommending vote only, so.
I don't like being a, you know, difficult at final plat. I'm not that alderman and I apologize to you for that today.
Question for Cole. In this picture, the water, this is going around the north side of the pond?
I'm off all week. I can sit with Cole.
North and east from this picture?
That's, that's the east side of the pond and then wrapping around to the north.
Yeah, okay. I got my bearings straight. Does the water even encroach on the neighboring property? Or is it just, is it all on the applicant's site?
There's the silt fence.
Well, the silt fence isn't at the boundary. It's just at the boundary of disturb earth.
Okay.
It doesn't look like it goes on the neighboring property.
I, I don't think there was any water sitting on Stanford Court properties.
But it's getting back to Commissioner Stoker's point. It, it may just be doing what it's intended to do and it's different than what was there before because they moved a bunch of earth around to prepare building sites.
And actually we have a, another homeowner that we spoke with quite a bit, that if it, if it doesn't properly convey that direction, that'll back up onto upstream the properties on Swan Road, which obviously we don't want either. So it, it needs to move through there and into Stanford, the Stanford Court area. So that's kind of what you're seeing in that photo.
Any other questions on drainage? Or maybe we should ask, is there any questions on any non-drainage items? Sounds like no. Maybe there were no questions other than the drainage issues that were brought up at the beginning of this item. Robin, I see you brought up one more comment card.
Yes, Mayor.
Yeah, we had already closed comment, public comment, but we'll, we'll entertain it nonetheless. We'll give Cole a break. He's been standing for a while. Jane?
Thank you.
How do you pronounce your last name? I can't quite read it.
Chivaco.
Okay, thank you.
I'm 10129 North Swan Road. So I wasn't going to speak tonight because I've been working with Cole for two years about the water drainage issue. And once they built the berm and the swale and, and piled the 40-foot-high dirt, I've lost three or four trees because they were in standing water. And I kept asking, can't you do something to grade this so that the water will leave my property as it has for 37 years? So after this gentleman spoke, I felt that I at least wanted to say that for two years, I have been unable to even mow the southwest corner of my lot because it's in standing water. The three trees that I lost last year were 14 to 17 feet tall. The water this year that was underwater in that back corner was planted in 1991. Now, I, I, I didn't realize we could submit photos. I've been showing them to Cole all summer. I, I could have shown you 20 photos of water rushing down the east side of that pond. And I can tell you that when the berm and the dirt was piled to the south of my property, I asked the guy on the bulldozer who said he was the foreman. I said, I am now understanding water. Where is this water going to go? And he said, don't worry, there's going to be beehives to take all this water into the pond. Now, that was completely untrue, but for a while I believed him and didn't do anything. I think since the storm sewers have become functional, there is less water back there, but it's often very muddy. And it seems to me, and, and what I kept saying to Cole, who's been very kind through this whole process, is I understand that this subdivision does not need to deal with the water that flows from my property and my neighbor's property. But since we already knew that Huntington Park had a drainage issue, why didn't we address it? I mean, I can't help that it rains and that it runs off my property. And, and so now there's this small swale that's going to run to the west. And then from the, the southwest corner of my property, that water is supposed to run all the way north on the east side of the berm that makes up the pond. And it goes into this tiny little culvert that overflows into, into the neighbor's property to the north. So it just seemed to me like we had a wonderful opportunity to solve a water issue. And granted, apparently our water couldn't go into the pond because of the elevation, but something to the north seems like it could happen so that they don't keep getting all this water. I just like to mow my grass without being in a mud puddle. And the four trees that I've lost, I have requested that maybe they, they be replaced. So, so I didn't realize this was going to be a major part of the discussion. So I didn't put my name in right away. So I appreciate you allowing me the opportunity. But the water flow problem has been there for two years. I do think it's gotten better since the stormwater has become operational, but I don't think it's been fixed and I appreciate your concern. I, I'm not saying I don't think you should approve, you know, final plat, but I think that this issue will disappear until, until there's been major water problems downstream. So thanks for, thanks for considering it.
Thank you. I'm at a loss here, Jack. I think we're going to have to.
Well, again, I think if there's something that you're looking for that would help the vote at the common council, I think you'd ask Cole to provide this to the council prior to that vote. I think, I mean, I'm not sure what else we could do at this point. I don't think it's really necessary to table this item because it does have to go to common council. But if there's specifics you're looking for, a relook at the engineering, a relook at the grading, something that we can look at to appease the aldermen's minds at the time of the vote, we can definitely look at that. But I just, I would need to know specifics on what you're looking for.
I think we'd need some more background on the two complaints that were just talked about. You know, maybe the, the one where it's flowing around isn't, isn't so much a problem. It's working as designed. But I now am left to maybe believe that due to the construction of this, we blocked water from getting off someone else's property the way it used to.
Yeah, I assume she was referring to, as you can, I think she was referring to the stockpile here that was causing an issue. But again, maybe Cole can address.
Not even quite sure because I don't have a map with where the trees are and.
Well, I assume her trees that she was talking about were in this area right here.
Yeah, it was on the south, south edge of her property, right where the corner is. There was some water sitting there before they fully graded the swale to the north that didn't release that water. So that was something we were working through with, with Jane and the contractor. It's, it's since been completed and fully graded. Yeah.
Been regraded and it should be fixed?
Yes.
Okay, so the process is working. We just haven't had an event to test it yet?
I, I guess so. I think that was graded before the, the big event in August. Yeah, it, we haven't had issues since then by my knowledge.
Okay, well, let's, let's package up some more info on, on these before it goes to council. I'm not sure if we're going to get any farther on it here tonight. And this will get reviewed again at council in a week and one day. Okay, any other questions from anyone? Otherwise, is there a, a motion to push this on to council where it will get discussed again? Maybe in a little more detail when there's been more time to prepare.
I would move approval based on the fact that the final plat matches the preliminary plat.
I'll check on that.
Motion in a second. Okay. Any other comments?
That's basically saying that they've followed all the rules, regs.
I'm saying legally, this is, we are doing, they followed what they said they were going to do. I am not saying anything regarding.
Okay.
My feelings.
Well, they did what they said they were going to do and followed MMSD and our stormwater guidelines. And they've continued to work with staff to address issues as they pop up. up. Okay, if there are no other comments, please call the roll.
Sure. Commissioner Ellsworth. Commissioner Chorin.
Aye.
Commissioner Hawley.
Aye.
Commissioner Schaefer.
Aye.
Commissioner Stoker.
Aye.
Alderman Stralcheck.
No.
Mayor Nurban.
Aye.
The vote, the recommendation passes to council.
And we can talk tomorrow morning about kinds of info to have ready for council next week.
Okay.
All right, on to item 4B, J&amp;J Custom Homes for Gorlick. Commissioner Stoker is going to recuse himself. The applicant is seeking a minor request approval to allow for the removal of two specimen trees to allow for a new single-family home, building pad for the property located at 12345, it's not a typo, Northeast Shoreland Drive. There is one person here who wishes to speak, we'll get that out of the way right away. Andredge opposes and wishes to speak, 13136 Northwest Shoreland Drive. Come up to the podium, please.
Okay, hi, my name is Andredge. I am on the tree board, and I'm here tonight to speak for the trees. Furthermore, the applicant is seeking a minor request approval to allow for the removal of two specimen trees. I find that very misleading. They are asking to cut down a 250-year-old bur oak with a diameter of 45 inches, and another tree, another bur oak, 24 inches. These trees have, were here before, the one, the one tree, was here before Wisconsin became a state, okay? It was here before the Civil War started. To cut down a tree of that significance is, it's unconscionable. Furthermore, that bur oak is, all right, that tree sequesters CO2. It filters air pollutants, controls stormwater, and stabilizes soil with its deep roots. So it also supports 1,200 varieties of life. So I, I am asking you to please ask them to move their pad to another location and save these trees. They are heritage trees, and I think it's a shame if any of you vote to approve this. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak on this item? If not, we'll, we'll go to the staff report.
Nate will come up and give the report, our city forester. I'll, I'll just address the issue of the binary request, that's just a fee calculation, it's not related to the severity of the request or not.
Has nothing to do with the issue, it's just a categorization for how much we charge applicants to appear.
I do have the, the map on the screen of the, the area, so Nate can give his report, and we'll reference the screen.
Good evening, everybody. Thanks for coming out on a snowy night. Yep, so as was mirrored when, with Jack's introduction, these two specimen trees are just a couple of the ones on the lot. Everything to the east there kind of is a, is a more wooded area with some other very mature mix of bur oaks, some white oaks, and some white pines as well. So tonight, what we're kind of looking at is a configuration, an original configuration. I believe we met back in September on site, and I want to thank you for taking the time to come out. At that time, we kind of identified some other areas where maybe we could look at some reconfiguration, maybe push back towards the river, maybe reverse and kind of flip the house, or reposition the garage. In this situation, we didn't, we didn't receive any other, any other renderings or alternate plans, where I believe there's some, some room for some reconfiguration, and if not, or moving the home towards the river to preserve these trees, reduce the grade, and prevent soil compaction and ultimate death of these specimen trees.
Questions from the commissioners? Commissioner Chorin?
I don't live too far from here, I've walked the site numerous times. First of all, explain which trees we're talking about. There's a number of them that, are all the ones that are clouded are the ones that we're talking about removing?
Uh, yeah. So if you look near the attached garage there, that was one of the proposed removals, that's the 41-inch bur oak, and there's down from that. In kind of the, the subsequent grade there, near the home, is the white pine that's being proposed for removal. And I don't know how, how these trees were, were measured in the survey, but the DBH, I think it says 67, and I can't read it from, from here, but they're actually 41 and 24 inches.
So the oak is another one of them that we're talking about, right?
The oak is the one up near the attached garage, and then the white pine is where the cursor, or Jack has his cursor there.
When I walked the site, there were a number of trees along the drive that had the green tape on them also. Are those being removed? Those aren't identified on here?
No, they're not, and that is something not to get too ahead in my recommendation, that I recommend getting GPS overlaid for protection zones to be adequately assigned to those trees as well. So these aren't the only specimens on site. That whole woods to the east there is also full of specimens as well.
Right, I mean, this is a comment to the builder. I know why the house is there and why you don't want to move it towards the west, because you've got the parking pad right off of Indian Mound, that if you slid the house to the west, which certainly is enough room, you would probably lose that parking pad.
That's correct, and there's actually a secondary reason to that. If you actually go back to the survey, there is a 100-year floodplain at elevation approximately 664, and from a general building practice perspective, I try to keep our basement foundations a minimum of two feet above that point. So if we were to push this house any further to the west, we would be impeding on that, and then putting the house at potential risk for, you know, water issues should you reach that 100-year floodplain.
Do we have any sense of where the original house was?
Sure, I can probably, this is, I'm using the county cadastros, so give me a second, I'll look and see if the base map has a previous ortho. Yeah, you can see the old house is located right here.
Yeah, that's considerably.
That was a lot closer there. That one was probably in the floodplain. We want to make sure they're out of the floodplain, but there is ample room outside the floodplain.
Right, but I think if I understand the builder right, it's going to be a walkout.
That's correct.
And you want to make sure that, that walkout elevation is above the floodplain elevation.
That is also correct, yes. And we did look at a number of options to, you know, we're certainly not in a position, nor are the owners of the property looking to take down trees that are not absolutely necessary. I mean, our intent is always to preserve everything that we can, but in this case, you know, the, the two specimen trees that are really in question, the 32-inch pine, which Nate and I, you know, did discuss, you know, that, that really is not in a position where we can avoid its removal, but to, within the guidelines that McQuinn has laid out, those are going to be replaced by appropriate caliber trees to overcome that one being removed. There are the two bur oak trees, it's really just the, the 62-inch one that's immediately adjacent to the garage, that's going to be within the danger area, so to speak. The one that is further in the property to the east, the 67-inch tree, that's outlined on here, but that is outside of the building pad area, so we have no issue with preserving that tree. It's just going to be the single 62-inch bur oak tree.
So the 67-inch oak is, is.
It's, correct.
So it's just the 32-inch pine, and then the, the other one there that I don't, can't read what it is?
That's correct, and there, the other ones that are on there, I think there is a 32, and the ones that are not highlighted, when Nate and I were on site a few months ago, those were protected species, but just due to the nature of the trees themselves, the condition of them, their survivability in the long run, Nate did not dictate those to be ones that we had to preserve, even though they're not able to be preserved in any way, shape, or form.
Any other questions? Alderman Stralcheck?
What's the current health of the oak, the oak tree and the pine tree?
They're both in, in very good health. As, as we kind of talked about when we met on site, obviously, and you're very familiar with the tree preservation manual, specimen trees are a, a spectrum. In the case, the ones that are going to be removed, they're big basswoods, but all the middles were broken out of them and busted out. So obviously, we don't work to preserve trees that are not going to be here, you know, in 10, 20 years, but the current status of the ones that are not being recommended for removal are in, in very, very good health.
I guess my question is, you know, how many feet would you need to move the, the home in order to save them? And, you know, what would be required based on the proposed home? You know, you're, you're recommending denial on the house shift, so I just want to know what the house shift would look like.
Sure.
You know?
Even if we could buy 25, 30 feet, just to get some of that soil compaction off of those root plates, I don't see those trees facing demise based on soil compaction, which is biotically one of the, the, it's, it's the factor that leads to, to death of trees the quickest is soil compaction, and even moving 25, 30 feet will buy these trees a lot of viability.
So a question for the applicant. I mean, what's the hesitation to maybe move it 25 feet? You know, that's an objection from staff. Staff's recommending denial tonight, so that's usually, you know, an easier decision than it is to, to buck the staff's decision, but we've done that in the past. I, I would, I would be so excited to have one of these trees on my property. I've got a bur oak that's in my backyard that, you know, was moderate size when I moved in, and I'm looking at it, and it's still not a large tree at all, so I know they're slow growers. You know, what's the, what's the hesitation to just shift that, maybe 20 feet a little closer and?
And again, as I outlined originally, I think the hesitation is mainly the fact that even if it's a foot, every foot that we push this house further to the west is going to put us into that danger area as it relates to the floodplain, so.
Okay.
You know, I'm certainly not advocating that, you know, a tree is lesser important than the survivability of the home, but, you know, as a builder, I want to make sure that I'm doing right by my customers, and making sure that they're not going to have water issues or flooding issues in their brand-new home.
Right, agreed. What I'm seeing is that you're at 665 and change, and then the parking pad kind of ends at 6665, and that is listed as 50 by 40, so, you know, the parking pad itself seems to be the issue? Is that correct?
Not necessarily, so if you actually look at the, at the south corner of the property, where the lower exposure is coming in, that's at an approximate elevation of 666, so that is the elevation point that I'm trying to achieve, a two-foot differential to where the 100-year floodplain is at 664. So again, you know, to your point, could that house be moved back 20, 25 feet? Yes, you know, that, that's a possibility, but it's putting us into that danger zone where I don't recommend putting the house. Obviously, if that is the direction of my customer to say, yes, that's, that's something that they want to do, that's at their discretion, but it's not something that I would advise.
Should you elevate it a foot?
Right. Yeah, so don't need exposure.
I mean, just looking at the topo lines, it's.
Yeah.
You're going to pick up 6, 8 inches of elevate, or decrease in elevation by moving it 25 feet?
Right.
Appears feasible. Commissioner Hawley?
What is the typical lifespan of one of these trees? If they're about 250 years old now, how long would we expect those trees to live naturally?
Sure, so in a perfectly viable site for a bur oak of this caliber, especially with the straight structure, strong central leader, not, not a lot of, or abnormalities, there's some cavities in some of the branch attachments, but old trees are a collection of insults, but I don't, I don't foresee this tree dying before 400, 450 years without it being disturbed in this manner.
I'm ready to make a motion.
Any other comments or questions for a motion? Commissioner Schaefer?
Move denial as per staff's recommendations.
Second.
Motion in a second, any discussion? All right, call the roll.
Commissioner Hawley.
Aye.
Commissioner Schaefer.
Aye.
Commissioner Ellsworth. Commissioner Chorin.
Aye.
Alderman Stralcheck.
Aye.
Mayor Nurban.
Aye.
Denial vote passes.
On to item 4C, Wade Design. Applicant is seeking a building and site plan amendment approval to allow for modifications to the existing building, including a new front entrance and patio for the property located at 6510 and 6512 West McQuinn Road.
So this application is for building and site plan approval. It's brought forth by Wade Design, which is one of the two tenants in the building. The site is .46 acres and located in the Town Center Zoning District, and it's a redesigned project aimed at improving and modernizing the property and bringing it closer into compliance with the Town Center zoning code. There are a series of building changes that are being proposed, including building additions on the southwest and east side of the building, an outdoor patio space, a second-floor balcony, updated siding and shingles, and a new building color. The addition planned for the southwest portion of the building will include an additional office and a meeting room, and the addition to the east will allow for exterior access to an existing lower-level storage area. And as you see in the renderings, that will also feature the glass and aluminum overhead door, which will seal off the opening to that storage area. The additions will continue to adhere to the offset requirements of the Town Center Zoning District. We'll note that the building is currently not in compliance with the setback requirement of the Town Center Zoning District. However, the addition will help reduce that non-conformity. And then there's no work planned for the other units, or the other tenant's unit, which is 6512, except for a remodel of the two existing bathrooms. If you'll recognize the look of the original building, which is not shown, but there is a planned removal of the existing bell tower element and the angular entry element to restore a more traditional architectural element here. The current building is more of a grayish-blue hue, so there's a repainting of the building from that current color to white with these olive accents. The applicant is also proposing to put natural limestone at the base of the building's pillars, as you'll see in that image, and that's intended to reflect the Town Center typical land and stone appearance that's kind of seen in those entry elements throughout the district. Final staff, staff will require final staff approval and review of the stone selection and the color, that'll be a condition of approval. We have had some discussion with the applicant about it and are currently satisfied with what's being set forth. It's consistent with what we've seen throughout this district. And then there's also, as I mentioned, an outdoor patio space that's planned along the west side of the building. It's a little hard to tell in the renderings, it's kind of that ground-level patio area that's to serve as an outdoor gathering space for employees. To the east side of the building, that is where the existing dumpsters are located, so considering the east building addition planned, the dumpsters will have to be relocated. Go to page 134. The applicant is planning to install a level-curved concrete pad for the dumpsters and to screen them with steel and wood walls. It's being proposed to move not too far from where they're currently located, as you'll see pointed out in this image, to the southeast corner of the building, to the right of the garage door. It is within the 10-foot offset, but the code does allow for dumpsters and enclosures to project into the required offset with planning commission approval. Staff is supportive of this placement, it's, it's kind of the most, you know, it makes the most sense for the site and with where the addition is proposed. The applicant has indicated that between their occupancy and the other tenant's occupancy, the anticipated peak number of cars will be 12. That's accounting for peak times for both businesses at the site, which is typically one to three for Strass, McGuire &amp; Associates, and a peak of nine for Wade Design. The site currently has 15 total spots, so that will continue to be sufficient for that. The site currently has 15 total spots, so that will continue to be sufficient for that district standard. In terms of landscaping, the image on the screen also shows those landscaping plans. The applicant is proposing a number of landscaping updates, which staff is supportive of. Per city of Mequon Code, off-street parking lots with more than 10 stalls are required to have 10% of the interior lot landscape, so we are recommending that as a condition of approval. There's currently a section of the lot that's already kind of sectioned off where the existing well is. So we've had conversations with the applicant about utilizing that area to have a landscaped island there. That way, they don't have to get rid of any of their existing parking spaces. Staff is also requiring some additional landscaping be added towards the front of the lot along Mequon Road. We are recommending that three ornamental trees permitted per the Town Center zoning district be added in that area behind the sign but between the parking lot, kind of to add some additional screening for the parking lot, considering that this is somewhat of an unusual lot. It's an existing building that typically wouldn't be how future Town Center buildings are designed. So that'll help screen kind of that parking lot area. We are also recommending that a Town Center light fixture be added to the portion of the property on the southeast side, kind of next to where that autumn maple blaze is shown, and then that additional low-to-medium-height shrubs and perennials be planted in front of that shown sign wall to kind of add some tiered landscaping. In terms of the sign wall, there is an existing monument sign that's planned for removal. That will be replaced with the masonry wall, which is shown in this rendering here, and that stone material will match what I mentioned for the bottom of the pillars of the building, so that will be consistent. Staff also believes that the sign wall will be a good way to serve as a hardscape alternative to alleviate the setback noncompliance and to enhance curb appeal along Mequon Road. The current sign is shown at .5 feet away from the right-of-way boundary. Staff is recommending that it be five-feet setback per code requirements. We're not too concerned about this impacting the landscaping plan because there is 20 feet of space roughly on each side where that grassy area is, so it should still allow for landscaping behind and in front of that sign. And staff is otherwise supportive of the sign design. And with all of that in mind, staff is recommending approval of the building and site plan amendment.
All right, thank you for that detailed synopsis. Any questions from the commissioners on the plans submitted? Commissioner Jordan.
This is kind of an interesting question. There's a well there. They're not connected to the city water?
Not right now, no.
Let's find it interesting. Neither here nor there. I do have to compliment you on, on the building. I've always found the existing building kind of screams a particular age.
Yeah.
And I think this greatly improves that, so compliments to you.
Thank you.
It is very attractive. I actually never noticed the building before, maybe because you don't want to look at it? But this is, I looked at it the other day. I forced myself when I drove by. I'm like, this is going to be a great addition or a great renovation. Any other questions or more a motion?
I would move approval per staff recommendation.
I'll second that, and then I've got a comment.
Go ahead with your comment.
All right. First of all, great job. You know, you followed everything that the city really wanted to see. The staff conditions are pretty extensive. Any objections to any of the staff conditions?
No. We'll comply with whatever.
You nodded yes, you nodded no. So.
No objections.
Is there, listen to the lady in the room, like at home, right?
No objections to the suggestions.
All right, good. You know, I've been in that building, and I ran a business in Mequon for 25 years. I've been in that building, and, you know, the fact that you're taking the time to put something this thoughtful together is just really appreciative. This is right, you know, near that corner, so I know that there's a lot of eyes on the, on the design and things like that. And the fact that we're not getting objection from staff shows that you worked with them well, or you put forward a well-thought-out plan that didn't, you know, didn't bring objection. I'm going to tease you a little bit. That doesn't look olive to me. It looks more like celery or sage in color.
It's really tough in renderings.
So I'm just going to be like, well, we want it, you know, sage would be great. Olive is fine, too. So we got a motion in a second, but I just wanted to say thank you for being a part of the community for as long as you have and for putting the time back in and reinvesting in Mequon.
You're welcome.
All right, any other comments? At least we have a motion in a second. Halls in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Congratulations.
Thank you.
Can't wait to see it finished.
Me, too.
Next up, we have Granville Ridge LLC for Elroy Kluge. The applicant is seeking a concept plan approval to allow for a 13-lot conservation subdivision on 60 acres for the properties located at the northeast corner of Granville and Mequon Roads and west portion of 11449 North Farmdale Road. We do have one person registered to speak. John Donofrio.
Donofrio.
Donofrio opposes and wishes to speak. He's from 11154 Sutton Ridge Drive. Please come up to the podium.
Sutton Ridge. Thank you. Just a question on this. Are there sidewalks planned for the outside budding along the roads Granville and Mequon Road?
Well, this is, this is, the answer is no, but we don't, we typically, you comment, and then we close public comment, and then we talk about the project.
Thank you. I mean, my comment is there should be, not surprisingly, there should be sidewalks planned for along those roads. Mequon Road is actually designated a highway. It's 45 mile-an-hour speed limit. There's a number of subdivisions in that area, and I think all of the subdivisions, and certainly the one planned especially, would benefit from sidewalks along Mequon Road and Granville Road.
Okay, thank you. I'll address that one right away. The state of Wisconsin just did that portion and only extended sidewalks so far, so that there will be no sidewalks being extended any farther for quite some time, unfortunately. Or fortunately, as the case may be, if you like sidewalks, or don't like them, because some people don't. Now for the staff report.
Thank you. So I just have the screen up here to show you where we're talking about, because it's a little confusing. So there's two parcels involved, this one here and this one here. Now, the address on the agenda is Farmdale, because this house is off of Farmdale Road, but they're keeping the 15 acres to the state and the rest of it is being sold. So most of the development will occur off of Granville Road, so I just want to clarify that. So here's the plan that we're looking at. So this is a 13-lot subdivision on roughly 60 acres. This is similar to our last month's meeting where we had the other concept plans. It's the same, same rules, same requirements, 300-foot open space buffer off of each road. They're allowed to have the stormwater or the septic system easements in the outlots, which they show. There's wetlands presented on this site, located in the front and as well in the back. They get the bonus lot because they have one extra, they're over 25 acres, so they get one extra lot, so they have 13 lots instead of 12. The average lot size is necessary at 1.5 to 1.65 acres, which is typical for our conservation subdivision design. They're also showing a 50-foot front setback, which is also typical. Now, since there is really not an opportunity to connect to neighboring subdivisions, there's the Farmdale Estates subdivision, which we recall, this is a private road. And then to the north is the four lots that are already developed. So the code requires them to have two access points, and we did not want one on Mequon Road, even though the owner had an easement on Mequon Road. He felt it was less safe. So they ended up doing a circle road with two entrances off Granville Road, which meet our spacing requirements and everything else. So, so staff is supportive of the concept plan. Again, this will be, originally would come back to you for preliminary plat and development agreement approval at a later date, so, so thank you.
Thank you, Jack. Any question from any of the commissioners? No questions? Okay, there's one question. Commissioner Schaefer.
What's the average lot size in Farmdale? About the same?
Well, those are five-acre lots. These, this subdivision was not a conservation subdivision. It was a straight estates development, so it's all five-acre lots there.
If I recall, it was once conceived as maybe being one, but then...
At one point it was, yes. The previous developer looked at it.
It didn't go that way, and it just got developed at five acres.
I think the reason why it didn't go that way originally, because we didn't have the permitted uses, and so they had to go through the PUD process, so they decided to go with the five acres just as a quicker path.
Yeah, the code was a little bit different back when it was first developed.
That wasn't that long ago.
No, but we made this change not too long ago. That occurred roughly around the same time.
No, it's just interesting that that still was somehow feasible, because that's often the reason given why we have to have density, is that otherwise it's not a feasible project.
Yeah, that development and the code change were two ships passing in the night.
Yes.
I thought they came forward with a PUD, and it was rejected, and then they had the right to build the five acres, and the five acres were built.
Originally, the PUD included the other Oldenburg piece that was across the street.
Yeah.
And that was, that was denied because there was a PUD requirement. So then this, this developed separately.
One of the few examples of, it really looks nice at five acres, you know, within the community versus the conservation subdivision, so. You know, this plan is, as I like to see it, you know, large buffers in between the neighbors, you know, entrance and an egress that are easily well-planned, lots that are, that are well, well-set. So looking at like just the screen that's up right now, I've got it here, you guys have it there, you know, it looks like, you know, the water, the drainage and the, and, you know, the water that's on-site is, is well-adressed as well, so. You know, I always listen closely to what residents have to say, you know, prior to these, as you saw in the first item on the, you know, on the regular agenda today, and just really glad to see that this is a, you know, really looks like a well-designed subdivision.
Is that a motion?
I'd move approval.
Okay.
Oh, a motion in a second. Any further comment? Hearing and seeing, let's call the roll on this one.
Commissioner Hawley.
Aye.
Commissioner Schaefer.
Aye.
Commissioner Ellsworth.
Aye.
Commissioner Chorin.
Aye.
Alderman Strahlcheck.
Aye.
Mayor Nurban.
Aye.
Vote passes.
That's all right. There's, there's a chance with our next item.
Hey, Friday, anything you're worried about?
Our next and last item, item 4E, Riverland Meadows. Applicant is seeking development agreement, preliminary plat, and stewardship plan approval to allow for 12-lot conservation subdivision for the property located at 4001 West Pioneer Road. And we, too, have one person registered to speak. John Gatauski?
That's pretty good.
Pardon?
Given, given my grandmother's insistence that I'm a doctor and I don't know it, it's pretty good. I'm just, I'm amazed you can read it, that's all. I'm impressed by your eyesight. So drainage for this, I'm not opposed to the project, anything like that, but drainage for the entire field goes across riverland there and over into the lots that are slightly east, which is essentially their buffer. Not to talk about drainage again, but their buffer essentially for the river is, is my yard. There's a pretty substantial creek, actually, on the northern edge of my property that, if this drainage isn't done well, is probably going to eat my house. And I just wanted to bring that up now, given the intensity of discussion regarding drainage.
Okay, any other comments?
No, just special attention paid to that.
Fantastic.
All right, thank you.
Jack, do you have the address?
14046 Highland Drive.
Yeah, it's, it's written down.
Okay.
Robin will have it for the record. I didn't, I didn't read it, it's my fault.
Jack, I'll ask you to pull that up so we can discuss it.
So what was the address?
All right, is there anyone else here this evening who wishes to speak on this item?
What was his address?
All right, we're going to close public comment then. And then we'll get to the staff report here.
Was it 1-6?
4-6.
Is that it?
Is Jack looking up the address?
Oh, he's down here. Okay. So he's located on this area. So I just have the map in front of me just to see where this gentleman spoke, lives in this location here. This is the subject's side of the parcel. I'll go back to the screen now. So this is the preliminary plat approval, stewardship plan approval, and development agreement approval for the property at Riverland Meadows. This is a 12-lot subdivision. The concept plan was approved by you back in September. They did adjust the preliminary plat to meet some of the requirements of the concept plan. One of the, as you recall, one of the requirements was to adjust the road so that would line up with this property line here. And they also eliminated the, the septic easements along this property line here and this property line to make sure that they meet the 75-foot requirement that was also a condition of approval. Other than that, everything matches what was originally approved. The plan hasn't changed too much. The stewardship plan was included in the pack. It's pretty well-done overall. I think a very thorough stewardship plan. It does meet the requirements our code dictated, including restoring high-quality, high-quality data prairie, enhancing the soil health, identification prevention of invasive weeds, species of noxious weeds, and provides a clear plan for long-term maintenance and stewardship. This will be actually incorporated into a legal document at the end. This will be something new that we haven't done in the past either, so there will be a legal document that dictates these terms, and they'll put, and it'll be recorded with registered deeds, so all homeowners that live in this subdivision will be on notice that they have to partake in this plan. That's one of the issues we've had with our previous plans, where there was not a lot of buy-in from some neighbors, and sometimes they fought, they fought with the city in terms of incorporating these, these improvements, because sometimes they are costly, but this will be a legal document that they're forced to be required to be a part of, so. Then there also is a development agreement that's in the plan that will require, allow the building of two spec hubbs prior to final plat, and all the other conditions that are required are in the plan as well, so staff does recommend approval. And this will go on, the common council will review and approve the development agreement at December meeting as well.
All right, thank you. And would you like to point out where the gentleman's property is?
Sure.
I think I can visualize it, but...
So he's right in this location here, the highlighted parcel here, and this is the development here. And Cole can speak if he wants to, the drainage and how the drainage works over there, I'm not 100% sure.
Go through the southern boundary of the property and then migrate to the east, is a, am I reading the map correctly? Well, it's kind of hard to see.
Yeah, that doesn't help.
I think it's on page 152. It's, I think it's where the greenways are. It goes out of the south of the property and then crosses the road to the east and makes his way to the river, correct?
I think, I think it's just south of this property, but I, I can't recall. Yeah, yep.
Yeah. It drains into the camp property.
Mm-hmm, yep.
Any comments from engineering, similar?
Right, not to...
Similar requirements, you know, it's supposed to be regulated to be no worse than it is now.
Yep. Yeah, and we'll look at the downstream facilities we have, along with that, being that cross culvert, and ensure it meets our requirements.
Okay, any, any comments or questions from the commission? Commissioner Jordan.
There was a lot of discussion when this was brought up the first time, particularly with regards to elevation. I think with respect to Pioneer Road, that's all, all been worked out?
Yeah, with the, with the berms in particular.
Yeah.
Yeah, there was an issue with the berms having four and a half feet, I think, from the actual road elevation, so we'll confirm that, but I think that's what the plan shows currently.
Yep.
And so basically, we've been given everything today that was discussed and...
Yes.
Okay.
Everything we discussed at the September meeting.
Any further questions or a motion?
Motion to approve based on staff's comments?
Second.
Motion in a second. I just have one question for staff. When we review the performance of the stewardship plan every couple of years, who's going to do that work? And how are we prepared for it? It has nothing to do with approving this item. It's done.
Well, this is the first one we'll be doing, so we haven't figured out the details of that. I'm hoping our city attorney drafts a really nice easement that'll dictate all the terms of that, and we'll have to just keep an eye on it. But this is our first foray into this new code section, so it'll be a learning experience for all of us, but we'll work that out. We have a few months before we'll need to worry about it, so we'll, we'll work it all out.
Okay, sounds good. Stewardship plan was well-written. Fascinating. Because we had a motion in a second, correct? Okay, a question from Alderman Strahlcheck.
Yeah, the other issue is the northside berm. That looks like that's at four and a half feet versus the four.
It was four and a half feet from the road grade.
Was it four and a half?
Four and a half above the road, yeah.
I was going to give you a hard time like you I was gonna give you a hard time like you had to go for the half foot. And then we're just showing the capability to put a spur on and go to any potential future development, but we're not building a spur on the cul-de-sac, correct?
Correct. That's a requirement of our code. It's actually built in. They have to go within to 150 feet of the neighboring property and put a stop in there, so.
Right. The plan shows We have some stubs in other neighborhoods and at this last snow event, I watched the plow go around and around and around and around my cul-de-sac like six times. So whatever we can do to like know what that looks like and kind of address that, that's not hinging on my vote tonight. Because this one looks ample, where some of them, you know, were kind of small and tight, but if it takes six passes with a snowplow, that's, you know, not ideal, but we just need to make sure, you know, are you confident this can be plowed easily and quickly within reason?
Yeah, I think this means our specs, and the good the good part about it is we actually get the entire strip. I can kind of zoom in a little bit to show you, but that entire area that is from the cul-de-sac to the property line is actually will be city right-of-way, so if we need to do something else or we have the ability to do that, it'll be our right-of-way.
Yeah. All right, good deal.
All right, any further questions?
The entrance is also at the property line, which was the other request that we had, and I'm, thank you for doing that as well.
That looks good. All right, if there are no more questions, please call the roll.
Do we agree on a streetlight? That's the only in the memo, but I forgot what it said.
What was the question?
Streetlight.
They have to have one at the entranceway, but they did not have any other ones throughout the development.
Okay, good, good. If there's anything we can do to minimize that entrance one, that would be great. Just
It's a standard spec.
Standard down
Yeah.
Down light?
It's, well, it's a standard one. We use the work with the energies. It's a standard light, standard pole that we use across the city, so I'm not sure what we could really change in that, but
All right. Listening to all the concerns that came up in the last meeting from my residents.
You ready, Mayor?
All right. Heard any more comments?
No, thank you.
All right, please call the roll.
Commissioner Holly.
Aye.
Commissioner Schaefer.
Aye.
Commissioner Stoker.
Aye.
Commissioner Ellsworth. Commissioner Chorin.
Aye.
Alderman Stralcek.
Aye.
Mayor Nurban.
Aye.
Both passes.
All right. Congrats, Fred. We just have one item left this evening. It's the review of the calendar for 2026. So you have that before you. It's probably getting brought up behind me. There it is. No comments. I needed it this time, but go home, review your calendars. If there's anything particularly problematic.
Okay, just let us, yeah, just let us know.
Let staff know.
Yeah, we have to avoid a lot of football games and other stuff, so this is the best we came up with, so. Yes.
Thank you.
Sounds good. All right. So there is the, there is the calendar, which brings us to our last item. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Second.
Motion in a second. Holes in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed or adjourned?
Why does it ask me to say this thing?
I predicted 7:30.